Please come to order for the August 19th meeting, special meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sonnion.
Here. May we have the report, please?
Agenda for the August 19, 2014, special public meeting of the city council was posted on Thursday, August 14, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item one is Director of Community Development regarding South Glendale Community Plan Environmental Impact Report, EIR, and Citywide Transportation Model Update. A is a motion approving a professional services agreement with Atkins North America, Inc., in an amount not -- amount of $286,420 plus 20 percent contingency of $57,284. B is a motion approving a professional services agreement to Fair and Peers in an amount of $246,000 plus 20 percent contingency of $49,200. C is a resolution appropriating $448,704.
Thank you. Yes, item one?
Yes, sir. This is a very exciting endeavor for us that really capitalizes on all of the good work that's been done by the Community Development Department Outreach Unit to get folks interested in talking about what they want South Glendale to be. South Glendale defined, in this particular case, is everything south of the 134. I'll have our Senior Mobility Planner, Mike Nielsen, come up to give you the PowerPoint with special emphasis on kind of the larger holistic view that the city is taking to the construction of these community plans.
Okay, so the purpose of today's action items are for council to approve contracts for the South Glendale Community Plan, EIR, and transportation model, as well as for council to approve a resolution appropriating funds for the EIR and model update. The Environmental Impact Report forms the range of studies and analysis required by the state as the city goes through the community plan process, while the transportation model will provide data to inform the EIR studies. Both will inform policies and outreach for the South Glendale Community Plan. This effort will also build on past plans in South Glendale and will incorporate comments received from ongoing review of existing city policy, including the review of the downtown specific plan and mobility study going to council this fall. The EIR and model update is also part of the city's process to update general plan policy, starting with the North Glendale Community Plan in 2011. In 2013, city council initiated the South Glendale Community Plan, and the project has been prioritized in this year's adopted budget. Work on the East and West Glendale Community Plans will follow sometime after 2016, after adoption of the South Glendale Community Plan. In regards to the South Glendale Community Plan area, this is, like Scott said, located south of the 134 freeway. It contains about 46 percent of the city's residents, but over 75 percent of the entire city's transit users. Eighty percent of its residents rent, and 84 percent of its dwellings are multifamily units. In fact, the city, it has over two-thirds of the entire city's multifamily housing supply. The area is also a regional retail and auto hub and has daily Amtrak and MetroLink service. This project has no impact to this year's general fund. Over half a million dollars has been secured from the city through Metro, while CDD budget savings from prior years will fund the balance of the studies. In regards to the consultant selection process, proposals were sent to 12 firms in the region. Out of those 12, three teams have responded with written proposals, and all three of those teams were invited to interview. Staff recommends Atkins and Fair and Peers based on their experience with similar projects in Glendale and similar projects that they've done in the past in the region, also based on the quality of the proposals that they submitted and the team that they assembled.
So, I'm sorry, so what does that mean? We're recommending both?
So Atkins will conduct the Environmental Impact Report, and Fair and Peers will conduct the Transportation Model Update.
Did they each submit for EIR and for Model Update? Or did they submit specifically for one and the other?
So this was a consolidated RFP process where it was both for the Environmental Impact Report and the Transportation Model. Oftentimes, firms specialize in one thing or another. So we proposed two teams that were familiar with both kinds of firms, and so we had three different teams, one of which had an EIR background, one of which had a transportation model background. In regards to milestones, we expect, pending today's approval, we expect to start EIR studies and data analysis this fall, and we'll be working on those studies through the middle of next year. We expect a draft Environmental Impact Report and Community Plan by the middle of next year, with certification of the EIR and South Glendale Community Plan adoption sometime in early to mid-2016. And we will be incorporating outreach throughout this entire process from the time that we start conducting the studies all the way up until the plans are adopted. With that, in closing, again, today's actions request council to approve contracts and approve a resolution appropriating funds for Atkins to start work on the EIR and for Fair and Peers to start working on the Transportation Model Update. And myself and members of the Community Development Department are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Actually, I have a question. I'd like to go first. So when there's a development happening, a specific project, we have the project, and they do an EIR as to how that project's going to impact everything around it. That's the EIR. Here, we're the end goal, the end result that we're trying to reach is as to what the plan should be. And so I'm trying to understand, how does the EIR process, how do they work together, as opposed to having a plan that, and then questioning how that specific plan is going to impact the environment? We have, we're in the process of trying to determine, right, what that, what that plan is going to be? So how does that, how does that work?
In this context with the community plan, the EIR that we're doing, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, is more on a program level basis as opposed to a specific project basis. So together with the community plan, this is going to set kind of the four corners of what can be done in the various districts of South Glendale. And that may be different from a project submitted in Adams Square, maybe different from something in Somerset, something from Vineyard, but they'll all fit under the allowable types of improvements in the South Glendale plan.
So is, are we, so how do we even start this process? Do we give them some parameters? We give them some specifics that we're looking for, some limitations, and then take it from there?
Great question, because what, much of this hinges on what you, the council, want to see in terms of policy and what the residents want to see vis-à-vis the feedback they give us. So events like the movie night that CDD did, which we did the big screen movie outside and had folks just come to the Transit Center and give us information about how they felt and what they would like to see or what they wouldn't like to see in their neighborhood. All those things go into this discussion about, okay, what would we like to see? What can the, the environment sustain vis-à-vis the infrastructure and everything else? And then we bring all of that together for an EIR consultant and a traffic modeler to look at all of it and say, okay, what is real and what is not? What is pie in the sky? What's really practical? And then bring it back to the council, and you would basically sand off those rough edges to say, this meets your vision of what South Glendale should be, in all of its disparate, diverse areas.
So the starting point is us giving them sort of a, kind of a wishlist or boundaries as to?
Effectively, I mean, I wouldn't go so far as a wishlist, because, yeah, we'll have, you know, what, those types of uses that are appropriate to the different areas of South Glendale and that which people want to see. You know, you may be in a very heavily multifamily neighborhood, and that may be at the ceiling of what that area may sustain in terms of the streets and the infrastructure that's there. But maybe you want to go a different direction. We have to start having that discussion at some point. That discussion starts with this overall process.
Okay.
It's also important to remember that EIR's study proposes a proposal as well as alternatives. And all of the alternatives that the EIR studies are ones which reduce the impacts even further. So it's, the EIR itself is not setting the policy or choosing any level of development. That's a decision left to council.
Right. Who? Yes, Mr. Devine?
I just want to piggyback on Mayor Sonnion's question about the outreach that's already begun. You might understand that. And then it will continue to all of the different regions. So all the residents have an input into?
In South Glendale, that's where the emphasis is. Much the same way that we did in the north, we'll be doing it in the south. And you can imagine, as diverse and, and as really dense as you saw, a lot of these neighborhoods are, it's going to take that much more of an impact to get that word out. And we'll probably have to do it a couple of times and make sure that what we heard is what folks really meant. It will be an exhaustive process, but that's why this EIR, I think, goes through next year, as I collect. We'll be back in front of you, not in a couple of months, but in a year.
Okay, good.
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
So the documents that'll be prepared will reflect development that has occurred and its impact on the street system and the city, right?
Correct.
So that's one of the new things that'll be added to this year's.
You have hard data to measure from.
Yeah, all the data to update. And you're doing the community meetings, and that'll come in-house with a consultant for analysis, correct?
Yes.
I want to be there. I'm not going to go to the community meetings, but with my background, I want to see what conclusions the consultant and staff is. I don't want to sit here and wait until it's presented to me here to start asking questions.
We'll be doing this in a study session format before it comes to you for final approval.
Okay, because I want to know what they're saying and what is possible. I know all the streets in South Glendale, you know, so I just want to see, I know there's very strong limitations on doing anything. It's the most dense urban place in the United States of America, number of people per square mile. You're not going to widen the streets and stuff, so I don't know what the public expects. Maybe permitted parking on every street. You're not going to create more parking. So I'd just like to see what comes out of it, probably virtually nothing of real substance coming out. But I want to have those meetings with staff, not, Chris, but just ask questions as it goes along.
As Mr. Foy had indicated, just to be really clear, this, this plan is not a, a green light for additional new development to either take the place of what's there or go beyond what's there. It's to find out what, what we would like to see there as a vision for South Glendale.
What possibilities exist in there? That'd be the alternatives.
One of the alternatives could be, in terms of substitute land uses, council, for example, has been looking at small lot subdivision. If we're able to move towards homeownership, lower density in areas that are around existing amenities, that may make a lot of sense and actually pencil out for somebody to come in and do it, or heaven forbid, we actually get the state to put us back in the tax increment finance game. That way, we can effectuate lower densities in some of these neighborhoods. That all would come under this discussion, too.
I understand, but it's the transportation I'm concerned about, with the streets the way they are. I just can't see doing a lot, not many if anything, in terms of a street widening or whatever down there. So I'd just be interested, from a, from a transportation standpoint with a consultant coming in, just to say, oh, okay, I hadn't thought about that. This is a possibility. That's all.
Right. And I, since it's, it has to be a reflection of our joint vision of where South Glendale should be or would be tempered by whatever limitations there are, including the environmental limitations. It has to be a process that involves us as well as the residents on an ongoing basis, as opposed to just simply getting a, almost a ready product for us to rubber stamp. That's the way I understand it.
Well, another thing that'll probably come into it is we did the overlay zone around Adventist Hospital. All future development will have a hospital-type overlay. Same thing is going to happen at Memorial. You see the additional buildings coming in, and probably within a one or two block radius of that, someday, that could be all medical offices, which will affect the amount of housing and people on the streets. So I'm sure that'll be one of the items coming out of it.
Yes, Mr. Najarian?
To follow up on your, on your comments, okay, this EIR is going to be addressing the existing policy that we have for land use and development, or is it going to be addressing what comes from the community in our outreach meetings? So which comes first? The EIR for the existing potential developments? The, the EIR for the existing and potential developments as currently zoned, or what we hear from the community coming back? So I'm not sure which is coming first, the?
Chicken or the egg?
Well, it all kind of comes together, to the extent that we know what the very real impacts are, or we will, as we're, that's one of the reasons why we're doing this. And at the same time, as we gather more information, we'll be able to model those based on a new and better, more concrete baseline. So it all kind of comes together. I don't know that we would look at it as, you know, the chicken or the egg, but rather, when we come back to you in July of next year, or June of next year, and the study sessions that precede it, this is what we're finding. This is what we're uncovering.
Okay. And this, this region of South Glendale includes downtown, Chris, and everything south of the 134 freeway? So I don't want the EIR to be commenced until the full impact of the existing development, all 3,000 units, 4,000 units that we've currently permitted and entitled, comes into play, the full actual impacts. Because I know there's a lot of assumptions that are in place for those units, that people are only going to have one car, that they're going to take transit, that they're going to walk, that they're going to have a bike. So I don't want an EIR just to rehash the theoretical impacts that these developments are going to have, these thousands and thousands of units. I want to see what the actual impact is. And that's what I was screaming about as each and every one of these came through, week after week after week. I said, let's slow down and see what these impacts are. So therefore, I don't want the EIR just to look at the theoreticals and look at what the traffic engineer for the, pick any one of those developments along Central. Only one is open, but there are many. The Triangle, the, the, what's it called? The Famous Building? All these cute little names that we have for all those. Legendary, sorry, not famous, legendary, et cetera, et cetera. I want to see what really happens, and I think we owe it to our residents and who's taxed, by the way, whose taxpayers' money we are spending actually measures what's going on currently. And then, of course, there is the unknown. We won't know exactly what's going to happen. I know that they're looking at that Citibank site, and the developers were here itching for a meeting, and I refused that meeting, for the record. I refused that meeting. I'm not going to sit on a timeshare sales pitch. But the assumptions that we've made with all those others, we need to see how those actually come true, and then transfer the actual reality on usage, on land use, on noise, on congestion, on level of service, on all those intersections, and then apply those actual results to what we're going to be seeing for the other proposed developments coming in. I don't want it, I want this to have meaning. I mean, if we're spending this money, it's got to have meaning. It just can't be, you know, pie in the sky, traffic engineers and traffic consultants presumptions, because that's not the way we should do this.
Certainly.
What do you say about that? Does that throw our time, time schedule?
Before you answer, my only concern, I share, I share your concern, I understand what you're saying, is my only concern is where do we draw the line as to when the full impact is taking place? The full impact may take place 10 years from now, so to delay the EIR for an indefinite amount of, amount of time is, I don't know if it's, it's appropriate. And also, just for the record, the Citibank building, from what I understand, the project that Councilmember Najarian alluded to is a site that was already approved for a different project, so I don't want our residents thinking that this is some new other lot that's being subjected to development. Just with, so with that in mind, Mr. Ochoa.
Sure, no, sir, I appreciate the concerns, and they're completely founded. The, the issue, though, I think, as Mayor Sonnion points out, is especially in a dynamic environment like we have, I don't know that you're ever done. I mean, there's, there's a, a development agreement on Central Wilson that goes for a considerable amount of time. I don't think you're advocating that we wait eight years or nine years or 10 years in order to get that last bit of impact. I think with each project that comes online during the course of this fiscal year through June 30th of next year, we're that much smarter in terms of those real impacts that you're talking about. Nexus on Central will be coming online, certainly Legendary will be coming online, Bryan Wilson will be coming online, Orange Wilson will be coming online. You'll have considerably more on-the-ground information than you had in 2006. I think you can make very good prognostications and estimations about what impacts are, understanding that we continue to bring information back. This fall, we're bringing you back another checkup on the DSP that adjusts what we knew previously. So I, I think more information is always a good thing, but to the extent that this type of effort to, to gather hard data takes a full year, I, we will be sensitive to not starting too soon such that we miss, and we conveniently miss the delivery of a lot of those units. We will try to time it such that, you know, we want to know full well what the impact is. It's kind of that Hippocratic oath of first do no harm.
No, I agree. And clearly, we can't wait till everything is built out, but we can see several examples, you know, maybe one or two. Elevay is open, and Lexon Orange is?
Camden will be open.
Camden, and then go forward. As opposed to our initial downtown strategic plan, EIR, which was completely hypothetical, and I think gives us less surety as to what the impacts would be compared to now seeing several of these buildings and large traffic generators actually operating. And then, there is some extrapolation, but I think it's a much better extrapolation for the folks doing the EIR.
And understanding that, that the DSP is a part of the, the South Glendale plan, not the other way around. So we're looking at everything south of 134. I, I can assure you that, that we want to get it right, just as much as you do.
And I certainly think it's, it's fair to have that hearing about the DSP that Councilmember Najarian had requested prior to really, really getting into it, you know? Yes, Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, the engineers have a pretty good history on transportation modeling, the impact of all different types of development. Yes, it's theoretical, but it, all of it is rooted in decades and decades of experience of impacts due to different types of development. Now, any unit coming in, whether it's there now or is coming in, that we have identified, when we did the downtown specific plan, we did not know the level of development, how many housing units would be in any one particular parcel. In fact, a number, I think, are coming in for less than would be, been permitted under the downtown specific plan. And even if we knew that, you open the place, and it takes years, maybe, to fill it. They might be 20, 30 percent leased. They'll continue to fill up, and it could take who knows how long to fill it to capacity and then have engineering go out there, transportation, and analyze the impacts of it fully loaded with residents, morning, noon, and night, and how it affects the rest of the city. We won't know that. It's totally impossible to know that. All engineering can do is make the best guesses on impacts, and now we have the one step further. We know all the ones that are coming in, how many units and how many cars they're going to generate. We can, we'll use that information in the CIR.
I'd always submit to you, this is an unqualified good. I mean, this is something that the people of South Glendale are going to be looking to the council on as to what your vision is for their neighborhoods and to collaborate with you on building that vision. It's a good thing.
And I, and absolutely, I don't think anyone in this council questions that. I think the concerns about the end, end result, the end goal are shared by everyone and are understandable. Yes?
And I also think Councilman Najarian is worried about a timeline. Did you give us a timeline? I'm sorry, was there a?
Yes, we would be back in front of you, we would hope, next year.
So next year, so a year from now. That would be when it's complete?
That's when we would come back to you for certification of that, of that ER. Now, let's say, for the sake of argument, that we were not satisfied with the accuracy or the degree of the results that we received, well, then we just keep on keeping on until we do get there, recognizing that there are some protocols for the freshness of the information. But we, it's, it's a, it's as much art as it is science.
So maybe enough time to see?
I think you'll have more than enough.
After April next year.
Okay. And what's the action that's being sought?
I'd like to move.
Was this just the report?
One, A, B, and C.
A second.
Let's have roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman? Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Sonnion?
Yes. Item number two, please.
Next item on the agenda, Mr. Mayor and Council, is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding Integrated Resource Planning and Owners Engines, Engineers Services for Proposed Grayson Power Repowering and New Interconnection Projects. Two A is a motion approving a professional services agreement to Pace Global Subsidiary of Simeon's Industry, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $299,500 and a contingency of $29,950. B is a motion approving a professional services agreement to Process Unlimited International, Inc., or its successor, StanTech Consulting Services, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $6.85 million and a contingency of $685,000.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
I'd like to ask Mr. Ochoa, Mr. Zern, be very clear on what we're getting for eight point, $8.85 million in the study. To a lot of people, that may seem quite excessive, but I'm sure it isn't. So I'm, I know you're going to lay it out in this, right?
We'll take great care to do that, sir. Another big idea, if it pleases you, Mr. Mayor, to, to go forward, I will very quickly outline and then turn it over to Mr. Zern and his team. The big idea here is the future of GWP power generation. Council has taken steps to ensure the viability of the utility on both the water and the power side. The linchpin is power generation. Are we going to be a utility that generates power, or are we going to be a utility that transmits power, distributes power? And there are those, most certainly, in the municipal markets. So really, it's going to come down at the end of an exhaustive, comprehensive study that this particular agenda item is in regards to, at the end of that study, for you to make a policy decision about where you see the future of GWP. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Zern, and he will walk you through this presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. As Mr. Ochoa indicated, this is really the kicking off point to talk in earnest about, you know, specifically the replacement of Grayson Power Plant, but more generally, it's, it's the future of, of electrical power supply in the city of Glendale, the lifeblood of what it is that we do, the, the key component to, to our electrical, electrical operation. So I'm going to do a little historical walk here. We've got some pictures for you. As I've often said, Grayson Power Plant is, is a museum in and of itself with, with what it has in there. in there.
That looks like from the Bride of Frankenstein.
It was actually named after Glendale Water and Power's first chief engineer and GM, Lauren Grayson, started commercial generation of electricity in 1941. It served almost the entire retail load in Glendale at that time. If you can imagine, we could do everything we needed to do with regards to distribution of electricity from that one power plant. And in 1941, that only consisted of one of the two original generators that we had purchased to install. And the reason for that is, the first 20-megawatt generator went in just before the attack on Pearl Harbor in 1941. Once that occurred and the war broke out, they suspended all sales of this type of equipment as everything was put into the war effort. So we didn't get back to that second unit until after the end of World War II, post-1945. Again, just some pictures, as you see the plant being constructed in 1939. In that far right-hand, that pipe looks very familiar. I think we just replaced that pipe recently, or a pipe like that. Again, just walking back in history a little bit and seeing how this plant, for those of you who've been there and visited in recent times, what it looked like when we first put it together, when it was first put together. I wasn't out there. But again, you see this, and you see on the left what it looked like in 1940, and what it looks like on the right, and outside of the colorization, there isn't much that's changed at all. This plant is definitely a Back to the Future situation when you look at this. Again, gas turbines that were installed in the '50s and what they look like today. All of the units that have been put into Grayson Power Plant, since the original units in the '40s, through some of the units that we put in the '50s, and then even, obviously, the more modern units in the '70s, and our most recent in 2004, are all still operable. They don't always operate all the time. They require a lot of TLC, but they are all still operable. The oldest units of the plant, again, are the steam turbines from the '40s, the remaining boilers that are there today were installed in the '50s and '60s. Units 8A and 8C were built in the '70s, and these are combined-cycle gas turbine units. And they are actually operated in conjunction with our original two units, 1 and 2. It's kind of a boost for the older units. Combined-cycle units are considered to be most efficient fossil-fueled power plants that are available today. Unit 9, our most recent unit that we installed in 2004, is a simple-cycle unit. It's a quick start-up, sort of a 0-to-50 megawatts in 10 minutes kind of thing. Actually, it takes longer than that to get to the full 50, but this can be producing electricity in a very short time. I have to tell you, I spent a whole day at the power plant once and was just amazed, but the time it took to bring one of the old boilers up, it was literally hours before that unit was producing even a megawatt of electricity. And they fired this unit up at the same time, and within about 15 minutes, it was producing the equivalent amount of power. It just was a clear-cut example of what modern technology can do for you, and not only in just getting your electricity up into the grid that quickly, but the effort and the amount of people to get it to that point was significantly less than the older units. Grayson Power Plant generates 180,000 megawatts per hour, megawatt-hour electricity annually, and that's about 15% overall of our total retail load. Obviously, a lot more of that in the summer, in the hotter months, but you can see that the plant, in its current capacity, doesn't generate a lot. And the reason for that is, quite frankly, is its ability to generate more. It's just, in its age, we become very cautious in how hard we push it. It has experienced a lot of breakdowns. In just my two-and-a-half years with the utility, I've seen that escalate over that period. Forty percent of the annual energy generated at Grayson is fueled by landfill gas from Shoal Canyon. So that's one of the benefits we have, is the biogas that we're burning there. We've been burning that since the '90s, and we continue to look at alternatives that will allow us to burn more and more of that particular gas. We meet all the AKMD standards, as you would imagine we'd have to do. We're burning landfill biogas, which is part of our RPS, our Renewable Portfolio Standard that's required by law. And that source of energy is considered green gas, and burned to generate electricity just as we burn natural gas to do the same. Here's an overhead photo of the plant. Up in the left picture, you see what it looks like today. Down on the right, we put in the footprint. So in that blue color is the actual footprint of the plant as it exists today. Due to modern technology, you're able to reduce size and mass. So that circle you see would be where an equivalent-sized power plant, equivalent being a 200-megawatt plant, would fit within the existing footprint. So you see considerably less space is needed to generate an equivalent amount of power with just advances in technology. Present GWP faces several significant decisions. Obviously, maintaining reliable services is the key for us. We want to make sure that we comply with state regulation regarding renewable energy supplies and greenhouse gas emissions. We won't have any choice but to comply with those. We want to replace outside generation as planned for retirement or contract termination. This primarily centers on coal. And that's what we're looking at first, is to retire our coal commitments and to get off that particular fuel and move to something that is, at a minimum, a cleaner burning fossil fuel, but ideally, green energy.
What portion of the energy that we produce is produced from coal?
About 30% to 35% currently. So what do we need to do to get there and to address those significant decisions that we need to make? We need to complete an integrated resource plan, and that's really the key to what we're talking about today. We need to undertake significant design and engineering studies, if in fact, that we want to continue to have a power generating facility in the city of Glendale. We need to meet state environmental requirements associated with construction of a large power project. And then, again, once a decision is made, if in fact, that we want to continue to repower, as we call it, Grayson, prepare for demolition, ensure proper and safety construction, and then construct and commission the new plant. And here we are, the Integrated Resource Plan, the IRP. And again, this is the key component to what we're doing today. Whether or not we decide to... Let me go back. Whether or not we were talking about replacing or repowering Grayson, we need to do an integrated resource plan. We need to look, this is a comprehensive look at our future in regards to power supply. Long-term forecasts of loads, evaluation of options to meet loads, demand-side, supply-side, remote and local generation, transmission options. And let me tell you, you're going to hear me talk a lot about this. That issue, transmission, is the linchpin to all of what we do. It is what is key. Generation is not as big of an issue. We can find power all over the country. It's getting it to Glendale that's tough, and that transmission is very limited, and it is extremely expensive. So the opportunity to produce locally-generated power with no transmission becomes a very viable and attractive option. We need to take into account the constraints, the Renewable Portfolio Standard, our greenhouse gas compliance and carbon offsets that we have to deal with, and of course, cost and technical feasibility of any option.
Are we currently... So are we using any energy that's not generated in Glendale?
Yes.
How much?
Most of it. So you saw only about 15% of our energy is generated from Grayson, so the majority of our energy comes from outside of Glendale, from remote sources, and a lot of that from outside the state even. And those are long-term agreements that we've had in place through mainly SCAPA, the Southern California Public Power Authority, but they include Hoover Dam, IPP, which is a coal-generating facility in Utah, San Juan, a coal-generating facility, Palaveria Nuclear Generating Facility in Arizona, wind in Wyoming, geothermal in Nevada.
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
With the efficiencies of a new, state-of-the-art plant, would that 15% climb?
Yes.
To...
It's hard to say, but we would maximize our ability, depending on what the market was showing, and if that was the cheaper power to use that particular day or period, that's where we'd go.
Because if you're not having to bring it in?
Correct. So we wouldn't be dependent on the market.
So we would be eliminating the cost of coal or long transmission runs by spending the money on in-house?
Correct.
Which also guarantees us, in the event of an earthquake or whatever, we have the power here.
That is correct. That is correct. And you'll see, when it comes down to us talking about that, the transmission, again, becomes very, very critical. Mr. Mayor?
So 15% of energy that we use is generated here in Glendale, and 30% of that 15% is from coal?
No, 15% is generated through Grayson. That's local generation. Of our total portfolio, about 30% to 33% of that is coal.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
And is it my understanding that then we could sell as well?
We could. We could. So if on a particular day, we had enough energy, or we had found a place that we satisfied our needs for the day, we could easily sell excess off of our system. And again, this is all within the IRP. How do we accomplish that? Are there interconnects? We're looking at alternative interconnects that allow us to get our power into, for instance, the CISO system, the California Independent System Operator.
So if we're able to sell locally, like we have, then anybody buying is saying, okay, we can get cheaper fuel from Glendale because we're not having to pay the long transmission costs to bring in from somewhere else? Is that theoretical?
Yeah, and somebody like the City of Los Angeles could capitalize on that easily, because there are transmission. The other option is, instead of just selling it on the open market and being more of a merchant-type plant, which is really not where we'd want to go, is to look at bringing partners into this particular plant. And so, you know, we have interest in that. The City of Los Angeles has expressed interest at one time, the City of Vernon, the City of Pasadena have all expressed interest in the ability that they maybe want to partner with us in sharing the cost of a repower in order to have some guaranteed generation. And local generation, as I said, is critical because, mainly and primarily because of the transmission issues.
The gas, the biogas that we use from Shoal, that doesn't satisfy all of our needs for Grayson, right?
No, it does not.
It doesn't? So we still...
Right.
And in the future, if we were to expand our energy generation, we would need even more gas to be imported to Glendale?
Well, there's a...
Or will the expansion, or in theory, the expansion of those capacities at Shoal Canyon improve that situation?
Both of those, Mr. Mayor. You know, you're going to have a more efficient plant, a much more efficient plant. Just so you know, in our overall portfolio, so from at the bottom end, Hoover Dam, which is the cheapest per megawatt in our portfolio, the most expensive in our portfolio is Grayson. And Grayson burning landfill gas, the absolute most expensive per megawatt hour. That's how inefficient it is. That's how the heat ratio is so high, it just is at a point where it's become cost-ineffective in its current status. But going back to your point as well, on the landfill gas, the biogas, we're also looking at a concurrent process where we would clean the gas up to a higher standard. The gas is not currently at a standard that, let's say, the natural gas that comes into your house is at. So it's very corrosive, and it doesn't burn as efficiently as natural gas does. In fact, we blend it. That's how we burn it. We blend it with natural gas now. We're looking at a project that would clean that gas to what they call pipeline quality, because recent legislation that will allow us to put our biogas cleaned up to the specifications that have been developed by the state and put into the natural gas pipeline system, essentially Sempra Energy System. And we can burn that right through our plant, too. So our hope is that we're going to be burning even more biogas, and that's, you know, we're sitting on a gold mine, so to speak, with Shoal Canyon and the gas that's produced out of there. Keep in mind, of all of the renewable green energy requirements in the state, we can bring green energy in from anywhere, solar from Arizona and wind from Wyoming. When it comes to biogas, we only get credit if that biogas is generated in California. It has to be generated in California. We can't buy it from outside of California and bring it in. We will get no credit for that. So we have a real opportunity. Not only can we use it at Grayson, we could also put it in the pipeline and send it to Magnolia, which we are a part owners of, in Burbank.
In terms of natural gas, has the recent proliferation or availability of local shale gas cheapened the price of gas that we pay?
What, Mr...
I'm not endorsing fracking or anything like that, I'm just asking an economic question.
There's been a lot of talk about suddenly that the country and the state would become, you know, natural gas self-sufficient, we may even become oil self-sufficient with all of these various techniques, fracking and shale oil extraction. We haven't seen the price really come down. It still fluctuates. I mean, it's not where it was when the market was out of control, but I mean, let me tell you, just this past winter, the severe cold in the east drove the price of natural gas through the roof. I mean, because supply and demand, it was simple as that. They needed more gas than there was available. There were days when we were worried we couldn't find gas. We couldn't buy... If we'd have said, "We'll pay anything for gas," it wouldn't have mattered, because it just wasn't there. So you still see the market, you know, the fracking and some of these things, if in fact, they move forward, and that's at this point a big if, we haven't seen anything that would indicate that that's had a major impact on the gas market.
So how far in advance do we purchase gas? We don't buy, like, futures or whatever they call them now?
Maybe Mr. Peters can help me with that question.
Vaughn Peters, Integrated Resources Planning Administrator. We have a portfolio of gas supplies that goes out about, it goes out 36 months.
36 months.
36 months at the longest. And in the near months, for example, this is August, we've already got the gas lined up we need for September, almost all of it, somewhat less for October, somewhat less for November, et cetera, and then it trails off over the 36-month period.
So this gas purchasing is a continuous process?
Yes.
It's one of the things we do all the time?
All the time.
Okay.
And we are looking at options that we might be able to lock in longer terms.
Right.
It's just, you know, it's that risk that you take. We've been pretty conservative in how we've dealt with our gas and electrical purchases. We just thought we'd show you a 1947 IRP, back in the day when things were easy. It was just about what your need was, what demand was, what the year was, and what your generation ability was. So we had three units. There's what the projection on what the demand would be over the years. Line graph it, and bang, you're done. Well, that's just not where we are today. There are so many other variables involved.
So after World War II, building boom started, veterans coming back, housing, whatever, and it's spiking upwards.
Exactly. And that's when you began to see where Grayson, even Grayson, this is a little bit early, but at some point where Grayson couldn't sustain even our own needs, and we had to go look for alternatives to augment our portfolio and our supply. So Integrated Resource Plan, this is something that every utility does, at least every utility that we're familiar with. It's something that we've probably needed for a while. It's about time, a little overdue, I'd say. It guides big investment decisions. So you're going to make those decisions about power plant repowering of Grayson, for instance, transmission purchases in the future, any of those kind of investments, long-term deals that we may end up looking to enter for power. Those are things that the Integrated Resource Plan takes into account and helps you make those decisions in a more comprehensive and more informed manner in the future. Integrates demand and supply-side options, including storage and distributed generation. These are two new things. You may have heard, the growing demand for developing affordable, and that's a key unit right now, storage for electricity. The idea being, is there some way, and this is done through batteries primarily, you buy power when it's cheapest, you generate it when it's the middle of the night, and you're able to put it into the storage, and then at peak, turn around and use it, thus reducing your cost. Distributed generation is primarily the phenomenon of solar and individual solar users. So when you have that particular issue, your generation is coming from many different sources, homes, buildings, and so forth. So those things have to be taken into consideration. If you don't plan properly for that, I mean, there's communities have been paralyzed because of the, in Hawaii especially, where solar power has gone crazy, and their grid system just can't handle it, because they've got virtually everybody on some level of distributed generation. So you've got to be very careful and do a lot of upfront planning. Sounds like a simple thing, put solar on, no problem, but it has tremendous impacts for the rest of the system. It identifies opportunities for off-system revenues. So again, this goes back to a question that council previously talked about, was, can we sell the power, or can we augment or replace power that we are getting from another source with local-generated power that's cheaper, and then turn around and sell the other power that we have to somebody else and actually increase our revenues? And that opportunity exists. And of course, and that'll be something that'll be included in their review, and of course, regulatory and contractual obligations we have with SCAPA. So meet regulatory contractual obligations, how's that break down? Here's our Renewable Portfolio Standard today, that's what the goal is, 33% 2020. We hear a lot of rumblings from Sacramento that may go up, we've heard as high as 50. Carbon allowances is just part of the greenhouse gas. Free allowances go away after 2020. At the same time, your portfolio should reach its mandate at 33%. So we need to be making sure that we're prepared for that. Contractual obligations, just operating in the Los Angeles DWP balancing area. This is something that's very interesting, very dynamic, and can be very expensive. You'll be hearing more about that in the very near future, and some of the things that we're dealing with with the City of Los Angeles. We want to assure local reliability. So again, whatever it is, and if it's a repowered Grayson, we want to make sure that we have local, the ability to go quickly and locally to bring power to our residents to ensure reliability. We want to minimize cost to ratepayers over time. So we're looking at the option that maximizes efficiency and minimizes rate impact. And you'll see it when it comes to you, you'll see it from top to bottom. You'll see one, an option that has the least impact on ratepayers... You'll see one that, an option that has the least impact on ratepayers to one that will have a substantial impact to ratepayers. And we want to see that and lay that out and let you have the opportunity to evaluate that. Determine optimal locals' power supply. So what is the optimal local power supply? What should we have? Should we have 500 megawatts? Is 200 megawatts okay? Is 250 megawatts? So again, it looks at all of these different things. It really is a comprehensive review of all of our options and a planning tool for the future. And just again, some benchmarks here, we've got our two, those two top bullets are the coal, our coal interests, so they're going away rather quickly. San Juan will be done in 2017, IPP in 2025. We'll have to replace that power. So that's something we need to look at, too. Additional renewable resources needed to meet not only the 33%, but also to make sure that we're in a position to grab more if, in fact, that percentage goes up. You know, what we've talked about a lot here today, and that's the major decisions regarding Grayson Power Plant. And again, we've got to look at our greenhouse gas requirements. And then again, additional import capacity depends on LEDWP. Again, I told you, I keep coming back to this, additional import capacity, that's transmission. That's transmission. If we decide, for instance, to close Grayson, we've got to find 200 megawatts of transmission, if we can find it. Today, my comment to you is, I don't think it's there. And if it was, I don't think LA would sell it to us. But if they did sell it to us, I can guarantee it wouldn't be cheap. It's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $12 million a year. That's just the transmission. That's not the generation. So whatever we go find, whatever that is, any kind of power we find, and of course, that has to be within our transmission system or our transmission area, it'll be that cost plus the 12 million that we're paying for the additional transmission.
And you'll look to match that against the cost of repowering Grayson?
Exactly.
How about Edison?
I mean, they're getting the power from, you're talking about getting power from LA?
No, transmission.
Oh, this is only...
Yeah. And we are not in the system, Edison's in the CISO system, as are most other utilities in California. We, along with Burbank, happen to be in LA's transmission system. And that's provided us quite a few benefits over the years, but it also limits us in our abilities and options on certain things.
Don't they have a foothold up north, though, some of our communities or neighborhoods in North Glendale? Edison?
Edison serves about 2,000 customers in the northern part of the city, so, and we've continued to engage them, but that, we don't have an interconnect to those. And that's been part of the reason why, we'd like to take that back over, but to, we'd have to bring them back into our distribution system.
Well, the IRP, before we get, this is all very interesting, but will the IRP analyze the benefits or costs in all these different alternatives we're talking?
Yes, absolutely.
So I think that's the, this is a great history you're giving us. I appreciate that, but...
No, this wouldn't be a very valuable document if it didn't have the costs in there. So all of that will be included.
Okay, so you're going to look at everything.
Right.
Sometimes we talk about closing Grayson.
Right. And we have a no-Greyson option. So you will see a no-Greyson, absolutely. So that, we go from a no-Greyson option to a larger power plant completely in Glendale to something in between, smaller plant, shared partnerships with that. And just back to you, Mr. Najarian, on the question about Edison, one of the things that we've asked to the owner's engineer to look at is creating a new interconnect with the CAL ISO system, which would then give us a greater opportunity for transmission outside of the LA Balancing Authority. Is it possible? We don't know. How expensive is it going to be? We don't know. But we think it's worthwhile to look at it, cost it out, and see it as an option.
But even there, you'll match that against future indications of what LEDWP's charges are on transmission?
Correct.
It may be very expensive for us to build that connection with SCE now, but if LEDWP decides to jack up those rates, well, then it may make sense.
Rate impact near term and over time, that's, we want to make sure that that's always in the mix and that we're always looking at that. Environmental impacts, and then all of the risks, variability in cost, local reliability, resilience in the face of significant changes such as gas price spikes, the RPS going up, as I mentioned, carbon prices spiking for whatever reason, because the market, that's just the way the market has gone. So again, fundamentals that they're looking at, replacing the Grayson units, all of the Grayson units with the exception of the newest unit, nine. We've got the coal interests that are going out, meeting our RPS obligations, and then just looking at some of those other things like distributed generation and some of the things that we're facing now in this new world of electrical generation, power generation. And then again, there's that last bullet that I was speaking about earlier, which is the physical interconnection to the CAL ISO system, which would probably be done through local Edison infrastructure. Demand side and storage, yeah, storage is something we need to continue to look at. It'll be factored in here today. It's very, very, very expensive, very expensive. I think the technology is evolving, and with that is, as in other similar types of technology development, the price will come down. But I don't think that's something that's going to happen in the near term. But we need to look at it because this is a future planning tool for us. Again, this is just recapping what I've already talked about. One of the things are, you know, is, as I said, it's become more and more fragile in regards to its needs for repair, and those repairs are becoming more and more expensive. I said this when I first came to the utility, and some of you may recall, in my 90-day report as the interim general manager, this was one of the number-one issues that I thought facing GWP and that needed to be addressed was the Grayson Power Plant. But at that time, I made the comment that when something goes wrong at Grayson, it is never small. It is always big. And I was actually a little bit taken aback by some of the costs to just make what are routine repairs, and a lot of that had to do because of the age of the system, the availability of parts. People, even finding people who know how to work on it has been difficult because it is so old. You see that there's a, the line there that says, "Increasing purchases of operating reserves." This is when we have to go out, if Grayson isn't able to produce the reserve level we need, and that's another key component to the power plant, is having our spinning reserve, because that can impact the cost of what we pay on an open market for power. The increasing purchase of operating reserves, and we usually go to LA to buy those, they are staggering. I've seen those anywhere from $15,000 to $17,000 per day to do that. And that occurs when we can't generate anything at Grayson, when Grayson is down for whatever reason, and we don't have any generation that particular day. It's happened at least a couple times over the last two years. And like I said, you go to LA and they know what you need. Everybody knows what you need. These people are brokers, even LA, and they're not doing this for free. They know that you, they can literally put that gun to your head, and they'll throw a price out, and there's not a lot, not many other places to go to compare that. You say, "I'll take it," and you push that electricity so we have our reserves available.
These are just the right, it's the right to purchase?
Correct.
Like spot market?
Correct.
Electricity?
Correct. It's, again, because of, and I'll go back to this issue of transmission. First of all, you have just the shortage of transmission, the expense of buying additional transmission if you can find it. But also, we're in a very limited transmission area, and that in turn limits where we can buy our power. It'd be great if we could find cheap power that was generated in Georgia, but we can't buy it from there because we can't get it here. So we have to buy it in this very, very narrow area, you know, the greater southwest area, Nevada, Utah, Arizona-type area. So that means that there's only a few purchases that you can make on a given day. Our traders told me today, maybe three. There may be three opportunities to buy, to buy power on any given day. Some days are maybe only one opportunity, because you have to take it at that point. Well, can you imagine if we didn't have the ability to back it up with our own reserves? That a broker could just turn around and go, "I'm the only, I'm the only option today, and here's how much it's going to cost you." And so we have two choices. We either pay the price, or we go back and look at what we need to do to make it through that day, such as rolling blackouts. And those are just things we don't ever want to have to consider. And Mr. Weaver mentioned some of the things that we point out there, that in the event of certain natural disasters, the LA Basin blackout, this is again when the CISO system, members of that had experienced a lot of blackouts and a lot of rolling blackouts. We had a big blackout in the LA Basin that was due, I think, to something that occurred at LEDWP. That didn't affect us. That didn't affect us. Talking about the biogas again at Shoal, and again, local generation reduces our reliance on LEDWP for that transmission, for that transmission. So a lot of this is, again, redundant. We're just driving home a point in a couple places, and the repowering plan requirements, which will all be included in the IRP. We want to make sure that we're creating an efficient and cost-effective system. Again, we're looking at the best new Grayson for the long term. And as I had mentioned, no local generation is one of the options that'll be reviewed in the IRP. We can go status quo as well, and just keep limping along with the plant we have and see how long that lasts. But all of these will be in the IRP and options for you to review, along with costs that are associated with those. So we'll stress test these, as we said. So we'll make comparisons with long-term gas price projections, high-long-term gas, weaker environmental regulations, stronger environmental, I don't think we're ever going to see weaker environmental regulations, very good possibility we could see stronger, and then combinations of all of those things. Takes us about six months. If Council were to approve this action today, we'd get the consultant signed up, and we'd, it takes us about six months to complete this, which at time we'd come back to you and review the entire effort and see where Council decides they want to go from there. Owner's engineer, and this is a comment Mr. Weaver made as well, you know, we've got two requests for you tonight. One is to award the contract to, for our IRP with one firm, and the second is to award a contract for our owner's engineer. Now, the cost of that is approximately $7.5 million with contingency. That includes their interaction, complete, soup to nuts, from today till the day we push the button at the new Grayson Power Plant and fire it up. They would be with us all along the way, handling every aspect of the process from design to project management to SEQA, to permitting, to equipment specifications, to equipment negotiations. They would be with us in all of those respects. So this is more than just an engineering firm. Certainly, they have electrical, and we have engineers in our operation as well, no doubt. But we don't build power plants. That's not what we do. We run them and we maintain them. That's what the city of Glendale does. It doesn't make any sense for us to gear up to be able to do something like this when it only happens once every 50 years. So this is where you go out for this level of expertise. But it goes far beyond engineering. This is a team, and this project's scope and breadth goes far beyond engineering. This is environmental. This is AQMD permitting. This is equipment specifications and purchase. I'll tell you, the two biggest, the two biggest issues here, if we decide to go forward with this, will be the specifications and purchase of the equipment, negotiating those with the only three firms that we think can provide the equipment. Negotiating those, and then in turn, getting the permits for AQMD will take the longest in the whole process. The SEQA process and the EIR will be long as well, but it'll be concurrent with those. But those will be two big hurdles that we have. This firm is providing us with scientists, geotech, they're providing us with financial analysis, they're providing us with legal analysis, they're providing us with a whole scope of services that we could not provide in-house. Now, to give you another idea, it's a big number, I know. It is a big number. But again, as I said, my experience in GWP, it's big. Everything is big. What we would estimate the cost to repower Grayson is somewhere in the neighborhood of $250 to $300 million. That's where we're at today. So rule of thumb in public works, the general public works projects, is you look at something like 5% to 7% of construction cost, total cost, would be design. Well, this is actually more like 2% when you make that comparison. So while the number appears big here for the engineers and all of the scientific and permitting assistance we would get, in the greater scope of things, when you bump it up against what the cost of the project is, it's a very small percentage of that overall. And it fits right into what traditional, as I said, public works and water and power projects, electrical or water projects that we put in the ground. The other thing I want to point out, there's a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. So the owner's engineer is with us and on board from day one, and will be involved in the IRP work. That's critical. But at the point that we come back to you at the IRP, and let's say the decision is, it's a no-Greyson decision, that's what Council decides, we decide we're going to do a no-Greyson decision, stage two of the owner's engineer never happens. We sever our relationship at that point, we pay the bill for what we owe them for their work on Phase 1, Stage 1, and we walk away.
That's why this says not to exceed.
Correct. So here is the budgets. I mentioned the two-plus contingencies. We've got the Integrated Resource Plan and then the owner's engineer. So we're looking at, for Stage 1, on the IRP support of the owner's engineer, somewhere between $250,000 and $300,000. So that's, that's what we'd be paying out, and if it was Council's decision not to go any further, to leave it status quo or a no-Greyson option, that's what we estimate we'd owe them, and our relationship would be done at that point. We decide to go all the way, then we've got a locked-in price that covers all components. We think this is as comprehensive a engagement as you'll find. We had a lot of help by looking at others who've gone through this, but we've also, we think we've covered pretty much all the bases, and we don't expect, like you said, Mr. Weaver, it's a not-to-exceed. We don't expect that price to go up. So our proposed strategy, obviously, continue, or to complete the IRP, come back to Council, get the results, get our direction from Council from there. If it's a no-Greyson option, then we'll begin to develop what our future is going to be in that regard. If it is a repower Grayson, then let's go ahead and begin the process of repowering that particular facility. RFP process we went through for both of these. We looked at the best way to cover all of our bases. So the way we put this out was, firms could bid on the IRP by itself, they could bid on the owner's engineer component by itself, or they could bid on both. So we had 11 firms that responded. We had five firms that bid IRP only, we had five firms that bid IRP and OE work together, and one firm that bid OE work only. And we went through a thorough evaluation with a panel of folks, looked at it, and decided that for the IRP, the firm that came in, a subsidiary of Siemens was, had the best handle, the best experience, and would provide us with what we thought would be the best Integrated Resource Plan. So we ended up splitting those. We had no preconceived notion, we just wanted to cover all of our bases. We figured maybe we might get, it might work out better if they combined the two, but in this particular case, it worked out better to have two separate firms. And then for the OE, and I'll call them STAN Tech, because that's the name that they are changing to, they were shortlisted along with three other firms. They were, they had the most comprehensive proposal, and by that I mean, they covered all the bases. Very few exclusions in their particular agreement. Of the four, they were the third bid. In other words, there were two higher and one lower. The lower-cost bid or proposal had left out two substantial components, including this interconnect to the CAL ISO system that could help us with our future transmission. So when you added that back in, their costs went up. So this was, was not only, we thought, the most comprehensive and the one we felt most comfortable with, it also ended up being the most cost-effective as well. So here's a rough project milestone. I don't want to call it a schedule because projecting out five years based on where we're at today is a little premature. But just to give you an idea, if we were to go all the way and repower Grayson, this is kind of what you're looking at here. We got that first six months to get the IRP done, and then if the decision is to move forward, here we go. And then these are some of the key milestones for the repowering of Grayson, with us getting a new plant in operation late 2019.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
I see the word demolition. Okay, what happens on the site? Do you have room to construct while maintaining the existing system out there? I mean, the physical layout?
We'll likely have to do some level of demolition, but the idea is to try to build and then decommission and then...
There's enough room physically out there?
It's going to be, it's going to be a challenge, and we may end up having to, for short periods of time, bridge our energy needs through more purchase.
I know it's very premature, but...
But yeah, we'd like to be able to try to maintain as much... But, yeah, we, we'd like to be able to try to maintain as much...
Do you think the, the plant itself, the physical plant itself, is smaller, because it's much more efficient today?
Yes.
So footprint of the new one, as you showed, would be much smaller?
Correct. Correct. It's, and it is. It just, you don't have those, you know, one of the things, if you're familiar, for the plant, is the huge bank of cooling towers that are in the back. None of those. You know, the cooling tower system is built in almost into these new units, and, you know, it's, it isn't anything near what, what you see there. You don't need the kind of structure facility building that we have. You don't have boilers along with steam generators. I mean, you just, if you look at our Unit 9, that gives you an idea of what you're looking at. The self-contained unit that sits out to the side, they're even smaller than that now. So, yeah, and I, and I'll tell you, that, that footprint that we showed you is probably a bit on the conservative side. It might even be smaller than that, by, by, when we get all set, when it's all said and done. Which gives another option that we're, we're going to look at too, and that's, do we build a bigger plant and bring in more partners? Because we may have room to build a much bigger plant with new technology, but, you know, our needs are about 250 megawatts. That's what we're looking at. But if we built a 500-megawatt plant, and we had partners that bought the other 250, and, and covered the cost of that for construction, might end up being very reasonable for us, along the lines of the Magnolia Project in Burbank.
So we make a little money.
I understand everything that you're saying. I am a little uncomfortable in voting to approve a $7-million reserve or budget for engineer's work for a decision that this council hasn't made yet. This is something that's way in the future. Why can't we wait on that? Wait for the IRP to come and hear what their conclusions are, and then decide if we want to put $7 million towards engineering and construction documents for a new plant? How are we going to pay for a new plant? Forget the construction documents. You said 250 million?
To 300 million, yes.
How are we going to pay that?
Well, there's a couple, I mean, obviously, that's debt financing. That, you know, that's, that's where you use debt financing to, to, to build these kind of significant projects. What number that may be could depend on, on what our partnership is. In fact, we end up with a partnership in that. And then you have debt service, yes, no question about it. Part of the IRP is going to show you what that debt service impact is to, to the city and to the ratepayers.
But can't we wait to get that IRP report before we authorize $7 million? It's more than 7. With a contingency of...
It's 7.5 with the contingency.
It's a lot of money.
It, but it's not, we're not spending that money necessarily.
I understand, but we haven't even made the decision that, that we want to go that route. Why can't we, is there any harm or disadvantage in waiting, taking a step to see what the IRP says, and analyze all these things that we're talking about, before we say, "Here's $7 million on the table"?
I think the idea of locking in what the cost is right now on the front end before an IRP is done, and before a decision is made by council, helps ensure that the OE's eyes don't become bigger than their stomach. That they don't come back later on, at six, seven, eight months from now, a year from now, and say, "Well, you know, if you did want to build a, a larger project, my fee goes up, because I'm the one that's overall, the engineer for this project, on your behalf, albeit. But, you know, if you do go with something more with these other options, that helps to expand the scope of what their work is and what the overall project is." I think starting at, on the front end is what limits their appetite as well as ours.
And to add to that, and, and this helps a little bit, as far as, as financing or, or putting the funds up, we're only putting the funds up for the first year. So that's all we're committing in the budget.
That's, you just said it.
And the, and the budget commitment will not be made until you've made your decision. So as, as Mr. Ochoa said, we are, in a sense, locking the price in, but the financial commitment won't occur until you, you've made that decision. So budgetarily, you'll approve the budget at the same time that you approve us going forward with Grayson. And if, if that's not the case, there's no budget. Our, our engagement ends with them.
So this is the old Washington DC game of appropriations and funding. You can appropriate the money, but until it's actually funded, there's no project that goes through. Or is it...
We're committing the funds. We're not allocating.
But there's two. There's, there's the, you know, it's, you've got to get the appropriations, but after the appropriations, you've got to get the funding.
Right. We're, we're committing to, to an agreement and a price. We aren't committing to, to spending all of that money just yet. And they're, and they're willing to do that.
Funding is here already. It's, it's, according to the reports, been set aside for the 2000...
We, we have the money in our budget, but we're not committing the full amount until such time as a decision made. We're only going to fund the first year of this effort, which is really getting us through the IRP.
Yes.
I have a couple. With the IRP, you have a fixed price.
Correct.
And yet with the OE...
Owners Engineer, yes.
Yes, the OE, you have the time and expense. Who's going to audit that and monitor that they're actually doing the work? I mean, you're going to, you're committing to this amount of money, and who on staff? Is there going to be someone on staff monitoring and making sure that all the paperwork is done, and everything that they're supposed to be doing, and that they're not kind of padding the hours or padding the time? I mean, we don't, we, you know, this is taxpayer money. We want to make sure it's used wisely and efficiently, and I just wonder why that's the case.
It's, that's absolutely the case. And, and Councilmember Devine, if this was $70,000, I'd be watching every penny of it, because it's taxpayers' money. Just because it's $7 million, that doesn't, that doesn't change the way that, that we do our business. There's an internal group of folks that consists of finance, engineers, and the city auditor's office, that will be watching this, and this cross-section of folks. So you're not just having one set of eyes, like an engineer, looking at it from an engineer's perspective. You've got finance people looking at it from their perspective, and, and then sort of on top, looking down on everybody as the auditor, who, who's, who's monitoring this. And we'll have that office involved all along the way. But I, but I guarantee you, we will, that's, that's, that's actually SOP for how we do things, when we watch contracts. This is just a little bit bigger, and then we'll require, we'll require a little bit more vigilance on our part, but we'll make sure that that happens. Just as if we were to go forward to build the plant. We, you know, that is, that whole management, quality control, quality assurance effort will be something that we've never seen the likes of here before, but it'll be, you know, watching every step.
And are there, there are no ways of cutting the expense, using the engineers that we have on staff to do any of this permitting, or any of these...
No, ma'am. At this point, I think that we want to make sure that the things that we commit to are the things that we're very good at. The things where we don't have that expertise, we outsource, especially when it comes to something like a power plant.
Yes. And that's absolutely correct, because we've already taken that into consideration. So whatever it is that our people are, and they're going to be very involved in this, we have a project team, that, that wasn't included in the scope of work for the consultant. So they're only, they only bid on what we needed them to do.
So let me, let me ask you this question. I'm following up on Councilmember Najarian's concern. The IRP is a prerequisite for the OE to commence. Is that correct, or no?
No, the OE will be working simultaneously with the, with the IRP.
With the IRP.
Yes. That's why we're, we're bringing both on right now. And then the decision tree branches out. If we get our IRP and council elects either a status quo or a no Grayson option, we terminate with the OE.
But we've already made that one-year's commitment for the OE, which is a significant...
They'll be coming along with the IRP, yeah? I mean, it, it's important for the operator, the Owners Engineer, to be following along with the Integrated Resource Plan as it's being drafted. It's kind of like a design-build contract, where you would have your, the folks that are designing are the same ones that are building it, because they know exactly all the intricacies, and there's fewer opportunities down the line for a major flood.
I guess what I'm, what I'd like to see, and, and again, maybe I'm not understanding how this process works, is appropriate, you know, okay the money for the IRP, and even okay, you know, approve the, whatever, five- or six-year allocation of the, the full amount, except preempt having to spend money on the OE if the IRP is go, the result of the IRP is going to be that this council decides that we're not going to do anything to Grayson. Is, is that not an option?
No, I, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, because you want to have the operators' engineer involved from day one.
Correct. You, you, you need to have that. It's critical. So here's the situation we find ourselves in. There is going to be a decision that needs to be made, but, but if, if in fact the decision is to go forward with the repowering, and we didn't have the Owners Engineer involved, we're behind the eight ball. We'll pay them more money to catch up than we would have to have them go along with us.
Okay. When we say that we, we are committing to that first year of the OE, if I can, if I can ask to go back to the previous slide?
Go back.
The, the previous one. Yeah. So, you know, when we say we're committing to the first year of that multi-year commitment, the IRP appears to, to have to be completed by February 2015. So at some point, end of February or beginning of March, I assume, we will visit the IRP. We will, we will have them in front of us, and we'll make a decision. Yet the full year's worth of contract will drag us into August of 2015. So if the IRP is completed by February, and we no longer need, and, and the conclusion is that we're not going to move forward with, with Grayson, or, or something other than repowering Grayson or expanding it, are we still committed to whatever monies we have to spend until the end of August? Or when we say the first year, we're really talking about this period?
IRP period.
Okay.
Marson Onion, we're only paying for the work they do. We're not paying them, we're not saying, "We're estimating this is how much it's going to cost you this year, and we're going to give you that amount." We only pay them for what they actually do.
And just one more follow-up. Do we, do we have an estimate for, I mean, did they give us an estimate of how much they think the OE will approximately cost until the conclusion of the IRP?
$200,000 to $300,000.
Okay, so we do know that?
Yes, right there. $250,000 to $300,000, excuse me.
All right. I'm sorry. I, I assume that that's the same amount as a $299 plus...
Oh, yeah.
No, okay. So those are two...
Yeah.
So we do know. So we do know that if the IRP, the conclusion for the IRP is a no, or, or something other than repowering or expansion, that's how much out of pocket we're going to be.
Correct.
Okay.
If we stop right there.
If we stop right there.
If we stop right there.
Correct.
Okay, so it's not, all right. So, all right, that gives me a degree of comfort.
Are the... Mr. Najarian? Thank you. Are the, are the entities that are doing the IRP and the Owners Engineer completely and totally separate?
Yes. Two different companies.
No relation between them?
No.
There's no incentive for the IRP to say, "Let's go ahead and do that"?
No. That was one of the advantages to separating it, and that's one of the things we took into consideration.
How about, how about staff? I mean, is staff completely neutral on this? Because it seems to me there's this sort of momentum towards repowering Grayson, which is a huge, huge step.
No, I, I...
You know, it's exciting, and I know engineers and power guys, this is, this is, it might be the Zern Power Plant, for all we know, but whoever, I know what you guys are already deciding to do on it.
That's exactly, yeah, yeah. I'll be buried in the corner.
But you've got to, this is huge. I want to make sure that we're completely neutral and open-minded, either way, whether it's closing, or whether it's repowering, or anything in between.
Absolutely. And, and that's why we've, we've gone to the, to the great lengths to make sure that the no, no Grayson option is, is, is well-vetted. You, you'll hear some comments that may give you the indication that, you know, there's a leaning towards Grayson. A lot of that has to do with what we know today, and what we know some of the expenses are, and just, you know, on the surface, that may be an, an option for us. But, but we, we also need to bring back to you and let you see what our power supply budget is. And I think that when you see that, it's staggering. I mean, we spend $150 million a year buying power and gas. A, a year. That's what we pay. So these are big-dollar decisions that we have to make. But absolutely, if we find a way, and we think that in the long term, it's better for us to go, as Mr. Ochoa described, a power distribution operation, not a power supply operation, then I'll be the first one to say that, that's fine. I mean, regardless of what staff would like to do, ultimately, I'll make the, the recommendation to you that I think's in the best interest of the city. And if that's a no, a no Grayson option, or a status quo, I'll, I'll be the, I'll step right up and be the first to...
And, and not having that power plant doesn't take us out of the utility business. It does. As I said, there are municipalities that they distribute power. That's what they do. That's what their ELMs do. So I can tell you that for two and a half years, we've talked about this, but really couldn't talk about it in this forum, in this context with the council, with the policymakers, until we had shored up the, the other parts of the GWP house, the water and the power operations. Those are done. This is the, the next challenge to be tackled, and that's why we're here.
Does this, sorry for, for rambling on, does, because I'm, I know that members of the community are very sensitive to utility rates, and the way we spend, and the way we plan ahead. Does any of this funding affect the rate structure and the rate design that we have currently implemented? I mean, is this, that $7 million is going to come from somewhere at some point, if we decide this is where we're going.
Right.
Are we going to say, "Well, this is a rate issue now, that we're going to have to increase rates for..."
No.
This is...
No, this is something that we considered when we did our, our pro forma for our past rate. So that was part of our pro forma calculation in the COSA that we did.
This is in there already.
This, this...
It's in there. This is in there.
This phase.
Right, not the $300 million or two, yeah, but this, this is in there. This was part of our pro forma.
Because you need to do, you need to do the, the, you need to do the IRP no matter what, and if you're going to do the IRP, you need to have your engineer there looking over their shoulder. And if you are going to take that next step, where you actually trigger that $7 million, well, that's part of a, a jump into a much larger discussion in terms of the debt financing.
And again, just let me, just let me reiterate, part of the IRP is rate payer impact. So every option will, will, will attempt to, to clearly show what the potential impact of the rate payer is. Great, small, and again, our, our goal, most efficient, least minimal impact to the rate payer.
And it's, it's a compare and contrast that you all, as policymakers, are going to have to, as Steve indicates, you're going to spend money on power no matter what. If you spend as much as we do now on the maintenance of Grayson, because it's old, some of that will come back to us as a, as a efficiency dividend that ultimately offsets what the debt service would be. Then if we have partners or don't have partners, all of that comes into play in terms of that calculation. And the delta between what our costs are and what our costs will be for a, a new power plant, those will be matched against one another. And as complex as this is, and it is very, very complex, I think that calculation will be distilled down to readily understandable terms for the council and the community.